So I'd like to call the Regional School Committee meeting to order for Tuesday, September 10th at 5:30 PM. And should I read this? First on the agenda is community comments.
We have, Denny.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it's not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. Are there any community comments?
They'll be online.
None here? Okay, thanks.
You should make it on. Not that we can see.
Okay.
But we can leave that up in case she joins us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda, we have Student Council Representatives, but I don't see them here tonight. Do we know their names?
No, their first meeting is September 12th on Thursday, so we will know who our Student Council Representatives are after that. And I'm sure they'll be excited to join us and update us on the high school happenings.
Perfect. All righty, moving on. Next on the agenda, we have Superintendent Comments. So Dr. McCoy.
Thank you. So most of my comments you'll hear tonight during our joint meeting with the Sherborn and Dover committees. And you'll hear a lot of what's happening at the Middle and High School through John Smith and Debra Keegan's reports and updates from their school improvement plans. So at this point, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, which is just to thank everybody for a great opening of school, especially John Smith and the high school team and Debra Keegan and the middle school team. Denny and I have been in classes already. We've been out on the fields. So much positive energy, so much community building, relationship building. Digging into the content is exciting. So thank you, Ann and John, for a great opening of school.
Sure.
And that's it.
Great, thanks. I think I was able to come for my first year of the day one opening. I missed my own and need them to attend Dover Sherborn's. But well, ours is only a small school one, and then we had district the next day. So I actually got like a double whammy. But basically, at Dover Sherborn's, I appreciated seeing how, you know, the values of listening to student needs, thinking about student experiences, and what would engage students in the work this year is a real focus. And Denny, you've shared a great story of your memories of projects you had with your economics class, I think. I feel like any one of us in the room can think of an activity we enjoyed in school, and probably it's because we were able to put something of ourselves into that work. So appreciated the day one tone that you set and look forward to hearing more. Now we have Financial Reports. Don.
Thank you. So you have your catch-up from the summer of our approved warrants and a little homework to do there.
I see that, thank you.
And so we have the remaining ones that were issued in '24 up to June 30th since your last meeting, and then what we've issued to date for '25. And this is a monthly report for new people that we just sort of have you guys review since you have designated one signer, which we're allowed to do. We just need to share the warrants information to the whole committee. We also have, we always start September out because we've really just gotten back into school. We're actually doing our first school year payroll this week. So we're not really, we don't roll out financial statements at this point. We did bring forward to you how we closed out fiscal year '24 as of June 30th. The numbers don't look extremely different from what you saw at your June meeting. I take the report and condense it a little bit and just give you more bullet points about some of the variances. And so you have your general fund revenue statement, you have the status of appropriations, and then we have our final roll forward of E and D. And why that's important here at the region is that's our free cash that is equivalent to what the towns have. So you will see that we are projecting our uncertified E and D as of June 30th to be just a little under $800,000. So we're down to 2.81%. The most we can have is five. And remember, your policy recommends three to four. So we're just a little bit under, but if you remember, we used a big chunk of that to be able to complete the rooftop unit project. So that is why we're down to that. But that is probably a more acceptable number for some of our town members. And so we will see how that flows from this year. So you will, you can actually see the closeout happening. So the first part is where we were certified as of last year. And then you take your revenue surplus, which ties to your revenue statement, your operating surplus, which we had a little bit left over from our budget that ties to your status of appropriations. And then you'll see the two votes that school committee made. One for the 655 to use towards capital, and then we apply $230,000 toward your budget for '25. I put a little note to you under general revenues because our surplus was around $257,000. Transportation came in higher than we thought. Even when we met in June, we didn't find out transportation until the end of June. And it's looking about an 87% reimbursement. We had 80% reimbursement when we met with you in June. So that's what's making us sort of have more than the $230,000 that we had applied to the budget. But that's our methodology, just for teaching purposes. Any revenues that we received that we, if had we known we'd have those revenues, would have offset the town members' assessments, we give them credit for it for the next year. So the $230,000 of revenues from '24 that exceeded budget is applied to the fiscal year '25 budget. So I think that's just good for you guys to understand, and it's a good methodology that we've been using as to appropriate uses of E and D towards your operating budget. So just to get ready, because before you know it, we're going to be talking about the budget. And then you also have your June 30 special revenue and revolving funds. And that's a roll forward of special revenue revolving funds, our fiduciary and our trust funds, so that you can see the ins and outs throughout the year and where our fund balance ended as of June 30. And so looking at where we are, so we've closed the books. We have to file our E and D. And I said in the coming weeks, and when I wrote this report on Friday, but our new treasurer was in today, we're actually able to push everything off. So E and D was filed as of today. I was giving him a little leeway because it does take a little while just to get up to that, but he did a great job, and we were able to review and, like I said, submit everything today. So I'm hopeful, no, not hopeful, I won't say that because it won't happen, that, you know, we will tell you what our final number is, but it never deviates. There'll be some reconciling items, so there's certain things they don't give us credit for, but it's going to be minimal. So basically, I think where I'm telling you the projected E and D is what our certified E and D will be once they finalize it for us. We also are, just started today actually, the work on our end of the year report that we submit to DESI on an annual basis. That's due by the end of the month. And our annual audit will happen. We actually used to start in the fall, but we find it works better to actually wait to start in February. That's what we did last year. It condenses the time that we use because there's just certain reports that we need from other outside groups. And so rather than have start, fit, and you know, start, stop, start, stop, it worked really well last year just to have them come in a little bit later. So we will be working with them to schedule them coming in to do their field work, and then hopefully before June, they'll be able to present the financial statements. We ran into a couple of snacks this year. And then next month, I'll be sharing a more detailed schedule of capital projects. But as you walk around and look at the campus, you can see that we were quite busy. When you walk in the sidewalk, did you notice new asphalt? So that was the last part of the paving project that we started when I think I first got here. It's just taken us a while to do all the pieces. So we did the whole loop of the sidewalk, and more importantly, we did the paving between this building and the gym and expanded it because we had a money area there. So that's all nice. And then we also, the ever-source project, I don't know if any of you were, Junction Street was probably closed all summer. There was lots of digging here, lots of equipment, but they put it back together pretty well. And we are now officially, a gas line's now coming from the Medfield side versus our own little designated building over near the field. So that went off, I'm not going to say without a hitch, but we did have it all up and running before school started, which was our goal. I think they painted the lines on the parking lot like the Saturday before school started.
They were dry.
They were dry. And obviously, one of the larger projects that we did, you can see the bleachers and the press box were in the final stages of inspection. It did go, it was delayed. We actually had to move, we were scheduled to have some games here last week. We had to move them. But we are hoping that we will be hosting the football game. We will be hosting the football game here on Friday night. It's just where people are going to be sitting. But I think it looks great. And again, just the areas around the walk now, it's just cleaner right from the parking lot. You can't even tell all the digging they did. The grass has come in. So we're quite pleased, although there's still some finishing touches to be done. We're looking at probably, I think there's a football game in late October, so it'll sort of be like the grand opening ceremony. So then we'll hopefully have all the pieces in place. And it's a Friday night game, so that's what we're, that's what Kim and I are shooting for. I think it's October 25th if I remember correctly. So we'll obviously do that out, but we are very excited. It was a, they started really the Monday after school ended, and they're still working. So it has been a lengthy process, but hopefully it will come to a great end and we'll be able to really make use of it. It definitely increases the property value here and lifts up, in the report I'll show you before and after, what we had, the treehouse and what we had. And then the other piece of work that's not sort of exciting is the duck work and linkers that you approved. So the rotted duck work has been replaced. We still have to do the insulation, but that actually took place too. So we'll have a pretty good, clean report for you as to capital monies that have been expended, and the one we'll be holding obviously is the rooftop unit that will be installed next summer. But that is, we did a lot of cleanup. In fact, let me highlight in the miscellaneous revenue on your financial statement, you'll see there's about $8,000, which is over what we had budgeted for the $5,000. A big majority of that is where we cleaned up some old capital accounts where we, the region had used E and D. So it was like $3,000 left in one, like $4,000 left in another. The way we close those out is to run them through the financials as miscellaneous revenue so they go back into E and D. So you'll see that when I show you the closeouts in October. So I think that brings you up to speed. Don't have any forecasts about '25 yet. It's still too soon, but you'll see your first sort of cut at fiscal year '25 in October.
Don, I just have one question. So with the, because the new, they have accessible bleachers, which I think look great. I can't wait to see it on, sit on them. The paving that we did, so how do they get from the parking lot? Is it paved?
Right at the ramp there. So where the high school, where the handicap parking spots are in the corner there, you'll actually see they put that touchpad. That's where you start. Go up and you start, and you go all the way around. And then the ramp takes you right up to either the stands, or if you go up another level, it takes you up to the press box.
And is there, there's no handicap access to the snack shack, or is there?
Well, you, there's, you could go, it wouldn't be, it's not paved, but you stay, when you come off the park, if you come in, you can go straight across to it. There's only a part that's slow, but there's a part you could.
Okay. Yeah. I think it's great that we're, you know, in compliance so that everyone can enjoy, not only students but grandparents and parents like me who enjoy themselves.
You'll see in the front rows where the handicap seats are, there's a break within the seats. There's the seats for handicap.
Great job. Thanks for getting that all.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Next, we have items for discussion. The middle school student handbook first read from '24 to '25.
Great. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. I'll talk a little bit more about our middle school opening. It was great, and it's really embedded in the school improvement plan, which is coming up. But I'm reading some handbook language proposal tonight for our first read and consideration, mostly based on some changes we want to make around our smartphones and cellphones in the building. And I thought it might be good just to give you sort of where this came from. So last school year, as you're all aware, there's just a lot of research that's out there around cellphones, and in particular in schools and middle schools in particular. And, you know, we could talk all night about what that research says. And our policy right now and as of last year has always been off and away. So students have their phones when they come into the building at 8:20, they're off and in backpacks. And even with that, we, teachers and administrators, we're dealing with issues with that. So not perfect, not awful, but you know, definitely could be, could be better. Walking along with this, in June, our eighth graders go to DC for three days, and always they do not take phones with them. And we're a little bit unique with that. A lot of schools, the students do get to take their phones. And, you know, our, that trip is remarkable in that our kids just really, they might kind of complain to us, but they, they're engaged with each other. There's conversations on the buses, they're into the tours. It's just a very different experience. And we get compliments, and we get noted for that. You know, the assistant principal, Tracy Sokolowski, went last year and said she was in the Capitol, went into use the ladies' room, and there was another middle school, and the girls are on the floor, all on their phones, you know. And it's just, you know, they do the boat cruise, and our kids are dancing, and the staff just remarks about how this, we don't see this a lot and how great it is. And our students came home from it, they come back different. There's just some social growth that happens, but they actually approached us and said, "Could our dance next week be phone-free?" So that was like a moment, I said, "We just need to, like, we've got to do something about this." And so I think it was just a perfect storm. So surveyed all of our parents, our rising sixth, seventh, and eighth grade families, which a bunch of questions, and I shared the synopsis with you, but overwhelming, great response. I mean, I had phone calls after I sent it out from parents. "Thank you so much, I really, we should be banning them, you know, thank you." And I think it helps them as well. It sort of gives them support, like, "Nope, you can't bring this, you know, this is a school rule." So some really thoughtful phone calls, feedback, and even with that, folks who supported, like, you know, no phones in school also said, "Yes, and we need this for family communication." And they were really, you know, I use the word compelling, that they needed this. And, you know, also walking with this sort of developmentally is, this is a time we're starting to give this age group some independence and being home alone. The phone is a really important piece to that. So I think, you know, I initially went into it, we're banning them, we're gonna, this is going to be great. And then, you know, I really was, you know, swayed by it, and it's important. So, you know, after really thinking about this and working on it, you know, I worked with Beth and Denny and, you know, Tracy Sokolowski, our assistant principal, and really came up with this proposal that you have in front of you. And, you know, in short, what that is, is just really having students, asking families who don't need the phone to communicate after school to not send it. If they don't need it, they don't need it on the bus, they don't need to communicate, please don't send it. For students that do need to send it, we're gonna, you know, what we're proposing is to have students use the Yonder pouches, which are also all over the news. And so students would come in in the morning, what it would look like is a student would come in, we would be there to greet them, they would, after, you know, receiving a Yonder pouch, they would pop their phone, smartwatch into the pouch, and there's a magnet that they would click and lock it, go into their backpack till the end of the day, where they would hit the magnet again, open it, and take it. Students getting dismissed during the day, we would have a magnet in the office, they would untap it before they would leave. Newton, two years ago, DESI did grants with middle schools, and Newton middle schools went through the grant process for a year with them, where every student in their middle school was given a Yonder pouch. And they, it was so successful the following year that Newton Public Schools are funding this in all of their middle schools this year. So, you know, I think that they've been a great resource for me too, as we've sort of navigated what this would look like here at our school. Because I do think one of the things, one of the principals in Newton said was, "It really depends on your culture. Everyone does this different, and you know, Yonder will work with you with your school culture." So I believe that as we're sort of navigating this. You know, we are, as we do this, we're really, we've gotten some questions by email from parents, and, you know, we've really started to consider them. So some of the questions, and I can give you sort of what we've, where we've landed, but we're still, you know, massaging this. You know, what would the cost of leasing a Yonder pouch be? Many districts purchase them for their students, but it's, you know, it's a big purchase to say like, "We want to do this now and to budget for it." So we're, we're proposing leasing them for $10 a year. So the student who would lease it would get it, you know, in September, return it in June, if they come back as a seventh grader, lease it again. Does a student need to lease two pouches if they have a watch and a phone? And the answer is no, they can both be stored in a pouch together. They can fit, they can actually fit AirPods in there too. Our students, we don't seem to have an issue with AirPods. Our students choose the watch, the plug-in earbuds, so, but if we had to, we could do that. Could a family lease one and share it for sort of occasional lease? And I think that feels reasonable. Will buses wait for students, given that many may need time to unlock the pouches? Do you see the bus schedules changing or being pushed back because of this?
No.
And no, they, it's really, it's an unrealized thing, or even kids forgetting to unlock. It just, like, that's one of my questions, and everyone I've spoken to said that that's somewhat unrealized, that it doesn't happen. What happens is they leave and they see other students doing, and that reminds them, and it's literally a quick tap on the way out. When you buy these pouches, you get a certain allocation of magnets, and you get, I think with the amount we're going to purchase, we get seven wall-mounted magnets that we would put on our entrances and exits, probably put one by the gym. We strategically put them to help students magnet out, if you mean, unlock their pouches. But also, you get handheld ones. So there's, I think we get four. So one of the questions was around, you know, if a student gets home and they hadn't unlocked it, well, local students could certainly come back or wait till the next day because, you know, I think that that happens once, that's not going to happen a second time, right? But we think about our Boston students, who we heard from our Boston parents around this, that it's a really important communication tool for parents, for them. So Boston students, you know, we could give one of the handheld ones to the bus monitor to have on the bus. So I feel like that that would be a good solution. Will there be exemptions? There will absolutely be exemptions. We actually have a couple of exemptions right now with the smartwatches being asked to be put away because that's a little bit of a new ask this September. We've got some medical situations where doctors are monitoring through apps on the phone, and they're exempt. Goes to the nurse, no problem. And we know that there will be some exemptions. And in Newton, there are quite a few. So there's, there's good workarounds with that. And the other question is around student use, phone use during a crisis, lockdown, you know, some kind of crisis. And at this point, we're consulting with Dover and Sherborn law enforcement, we actually are meeting with them at a meeting tomorrow, so this will be part of it. So there's a lot of discussion around that piece, and I think that has to be very well-thought-out and communicated between the, you know, the both. So that's where we're at. I'm sure there's some questions and considerations. Again, Yonder is a great company. They're the only company in town, so, you know, we're working with them, they'd be great, and they're, they're really rolling this out in a lot of schools. They have an awesome rollout plan where they really walk with us. They, you know, will hold a parent night, will, the information is unbelievable. So they really walk with us on this. And they are so experienced that, you know, some of these questions that I called them with, they could share from other schools' experiences, and we also have Newton to sort of lean on as well. So hopefully I've covered everything, but I'm happy to take questions and, you know, here are some suggestions because I think that this is somewhat of a unique pilot in that we're leasing them, not purchasing them for everyone, and we're also asking folks to keep them at home, which I, I think, you know, we have, I'll tell you, we're eight days in and we haven't had any phone issues. Tomorrow, I really regret saying that. So they do require you to purchase them. So they require you to purchase one for every student. They pull your DESI number. So we do have to make that initial capital outlay.
$10 per student?
It's $30. It's $30. So we're looking, I think it was $13,500. So the way, the way we think we're going to set this up if we move forward is set it up in one of our revolving funds so that over time it'll get paid back as we do the leasing. And we know we're going to have extra pouches because not every student is going to want one. So we'll have some in inventory that will allow us to use these over multiple years. And I don't think we really know the true useful life of a pouch either. So I think they must have told you three, which is why we were going to divide it by, you know, $10 a year. So our hope is we'll do the initial capital outlay, that over several years, we will get that money back, and then we can use that money to buy new ones as we need it. Because once you're in the program, you can buy what you need to replenish.
But you all were talking about if they lost it. What, do we pass the cost on? What is that cost?
So we were going to do a $30 replacement.
Okay. Yep.
When you're taking something away, it's nice to know like what you're getting in return. So what have you heard from other schools who have done this? That are the benefits and the...
Sure, great question. So again, I'll point to Newton because they're a middle school, and they did a pilot with DESI funded it. So then the next year, they got to determine, are we going to go forward with this, are we as a district going to own and sort of make these purchases? So those principals, you know, went to their school board for the funding, and they had teachers show up, they had parents show up, that just, the support was unbelievable. And now, the amount of incidents went down, the engagement and, you know, everything. The teachers, teachers were not policing this anymore. It was just, it really changed the culture. And, you know, they share that the students actually really, it's almost like the DC experience with it, students really, you know, they're not feeling the buzz of the notifications, they're not going to the bathroom, and, you know. So I think overall, they had the choice to walk away without any loss, but they chose to invest and kind of go forward with it. So I think, yeah, I feel, that's, that's my metric right there, is that they went, they got to try it, and they are continuing to move forward with it. And I've already emailed probably 10 times this poor principal on a first-name basis, and we have cellphones, you know. So, but I do think like it's, I think we're set up for a good success. I think ours is a little different than Newton in that we're, you know, we're not purchasing for them, but, you know, we're having people buy in and also sort of say, "Look, we're not sending the phone if you don't need it," which I like that piece though.
I think it's important there too, because it is an investment that hasn't been built into our operating budget. Again, but if you think about it, having a cellphone or smartphone is a privilege, is not right, just like our parking is a privilege, not right. And so to ask the parents, you know, we ask them to buy the earbuds and the pencils and the holders. If you want to send your child to school with a smartphone, we're asking that you buy this, make this a resource as well.
So just to go back to the very basics, and I have read articles about it, but how exactly does it work? A student comes in, and when you magnet it locked, you need one of these other magnets to unlock it?
Same magnet. Same magnet locks it and unlocks it.
But they don't have access to that until...
Nope. So here's the details of the...
But if they're just all around?
School administration. So the magnets are put up in the morning, they kind of just screw on. After students are in, we take them off.
Okay.
I know our kids would never go just right on.
Am I seeing a black market for it?
Oh, I know. Well, I think the magnets are specified for our bags too, right? Because, you know, we were thinking, could you go to other schools?
Well, I'm just thinking with teenage kids.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we've, we've gone down this road. So we even think in the morning, we'll just have two magnets at both these doors, and then in the afternoon, we'll put a couple more out. We'll have the P folks put one up at the end of the day because that'll help our kids who go up to the buses that way. Not even put two down there.
So you keep the pouch with you, but it's locked?
The students keep it on them. Our students aren't big locker users here, but so they keep them in the backpack.
And I know we can't answer this now, but I'll be curious if it's successful if we think about it for the high school.
Yeah.
There is a lot of chatter on the superintendent's server right now about this rolling up to high school.
Yeah, I'm curious.
So nowadays, they're, even if they don't have a phone, kids find a way around on their laptops. How are you going to control that? How do you, how are people doing?
Sure, no, it's a great question. Our students, we're, you know, a one-to-one with Chromebooks here, so we have things in place that, that keep them off of those sites. We have students in classes, our, you know, our teachers use something called ClassWise where they're able to monitor what students are doing. It's not perfect. Some of our really intelligent technology students can get a, but, you know, for the most part, our students are, you know, there's a pretty high monitoring here of what they're doing on the Chromebook.
But that's a good point because at the high school, they don't...
High school, they don't, high school, they all have...
You know, cross that bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah. And another thing was, like, a lot of the sports, they leave at during flex or just around flex. So how, and they're constantly have like a group me kind of a chat or something. So how do we, you know, like, that's, of course, there'll be solutions for that as well. Like, all the coaches and the teams are talking on that.
I think when we get to, if we consider this for the high school, we'll have to cross all these bridges.
Yeah.
Maybe that's more high school, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think, too, at the high school, we have to think, too, they're going to be going to college, so we have to make sure that we don't take all these things away to them when they get to college. It's like, oh, look, I can do all of this! And then they're not studying because they're, you know, over in thought and, you know...
I do see that they're constantly on their phone. It's very hard, very hard. I mean, if, if they are finding it hard to move away from the...
Yes.
So that's the tough thing. It's not like that two years ago, but it's getting more and more.
And while the high school, a lot of them have the sheet bag.
Yeah.
The kids have to put their phones during class in the sheet bag.
Because I know with all my son's classes, they have to go in the cell, the cellphone hotel. They stay in there. And then, you know, I think, he's so busy trying to get his homework done so he can do sports afterwards, he doesn't have time on the phone anymore because he's got to get everything done.
And I do think walking along this, I, I do, I have these moments where I feel like we're just taking the phones, right? And we're not sort of addressing, how do you sort of monitor yourself? How do you, how do you, you know, so I will say, walking along with this, we are in our tech classes, we are working with UNH right now and Common Sense Media, we are piloting a media literacy course that, you know, really talks about this. So I would say, you know, we're, we're sort of doing this, I wouldn't call it punitive, but I think we're sort of addressing what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to help teach them to moderate their use of their phones, but we've also got some of this literacy around phones that's going on as well. So, you know, not report back how that goes, but we've got it going on in our health classes, working with, we're chosen for, to be one of the pilot schools to do it, and it looks like a great curriculum. So, so we've got that. And then there was a real, you know, one of the questions that we put in the survey was, you know, what would parents want for sort of education? And that was really powerful, listening to parents. It was, you know, a lot of, I would say, if I could generalize sort of the top response, it was, I just, I just don't want my student, I, I really would love to normalize not having phones at this age. And it's, we have to do this together. And there was a lot of people that really promoted this wait till eight campaign, which is having students wait till the summer after their eighth grade year to get a phone, and then waiting, and even further now, waiting to sixteen for social media. So, but that's really something you have to, communities do. I think a parent can singly say that, and that's fine, but, you know, you could just hear it in the responses, like, this is really hard being a parent of a student with a phone when I don't want them to have it, but everyone else has it. So you could just, you could just feel that. So I think like, once, you know, if we do move forward with this, that's where our work will go. I think, you know, we have our open house next week, and I'm going to put some wait till eight information out there because you can even, what they say is, even if a student has a phone, there's some things you can do to sort of pull back and sort of help them moderate it. So it's big, it's complicated. It's, it's not simple, but I could just, you know, it was just a survey, it was just a couple of phone calls, but you could just hear the parents' sort of angst with this. And, and I, you know, believe me, we've all been there, I think. You know, it's just a, a really hard piece of parenting.
So speaking of angst, there is a conversation starting in the community about doing a community-wide read, and just generation, generation, which, you know, reinforces all of the research and the...
It's great.
So stay tuned if that gets off the ground, right? And I do want to commend Anne and her committee, because we're doing a lot of research, a lot of outreach to the parents, the kids, and really thinking about this thoroughly before coming to you with a proposal. So tonight is the first read, because this would go into the student handbook, it has to be approved by you. So if you have any other questions between now and then, certainly happy to answer them.
I was just going to say one more thing. I submitted questions, I already answered all of them, so thank you very much.
Okay, great, thanks.
But I was just going to say, I spent some time looking at Department of Homeland Security's recommendations for like active shooter situations. And the, if you look into Georgia, what made the difference was the technology the teachers had, wasn't children's access to cellphones.
Right.
And their recommendation is like this run, fight, hide scenario situation. And again, it's a, you know, access to cellphones is a rally point after a disaster or something like that. So, so it's just kind of like a teaching and education of what the policies and procedures behind these types of scenarios are that are more important than their access to the cellphone.
Yeah. Yeah, I think for the reunification, huge.
Yeah.
So, you know, at that point, let's, God forbid, but we would probably have those handheld magnets wherever reunification was. You know, there's, the Yonder folks say sometimes police departments get one of the handhelds just to have in case of, so we would probably, you know, again, after we consult with law enforcement. You know, yeah, the Georgia piece is so interesting. I think in talking very surfacely with our local law enforcement the last week, someone having a phone is important, but not everyone. And so our teachers will have phones, you know, so, yeah. And I think our synergy people would probably say the same thing, and they have said the same thing, having everyone call, and, and we need our kids listening to us in those moments. So, you know, I'm not sure where we'll land with that, but I agree, I think that's the burrow we probably headed down.
Thank you for doing that research for us.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we'll be back for a second read and provide some more details and FAQs, and, you know, we'll dig deeper now that we're sort of on this road. So thank you, appreciate the insight and questions.
Next, we have two items for approval. The second read of the middle school's school improvement plan and the second read of the high school's school improvement plan.
I'll go. Awesome. So, you know, the improvement plan reads like the opening of schools, there's so much, there's a lot of new things happening in this building, exciting, new. And with, you know, we're excited and it's, but it's, again, it's all to, as we say, improve our school, if you may. So I know we talked about this back in the spring, but we are, you know, our first goal is around continuing our work around best practices. And we'll continue to do that through PD with our curriculum leaders, team leaders, and teachers setting goals around these as well. So I think that our best practices are really starting to become infused with, you know, how teachers plan and work and how we deliver PD. And right there with that is the portrait of a graduate. There's so many things we do here in the building that reflect the portrait of a graduate, and I, I see it and just, we can point to it. So I think really elevating that, pointing to it and sharing that, so others can certainly follow. The second goal is a big one, there's a lot going on in this one. And as you know, we have a, a new schedule here at the middle school, and we're implementing that. And, you know, there's a lot that goes with that. There's a lot of tweaking, a lot of sort of adjustment that happens, so we'll continue to work with that. One of the big pieces of our new schedule is our wind block, what I need, which is an intervention block to support students who may need help or help students with extension work. So we are, you know, up and running with that and really moving forward with. So that's going to be a lot of our work this. I don't think a day goes by where we're not working on that schedule and, you know, the wind block and how we can, you know, continue to move that forward. Again, we just spoke of the smartphone, smartwatch protocols. You know, we're working with our challenge success survey results, and actually next week with staff, we're doing a big activity around that and really getting people to think about the importance of belonging in a school community. And I think DS across the board does a really great job with that in general. I think our kids just feel so connected. I got a couple of really nice emails from some sixth-grade parents about how their students transitioned well, and that's, you know, it's like a superpower of our sixth-grade team. They really recognize that this is a big movement and, you know, transition, and do such a great job with our students. So I think we'll continue to grow that. And again, this is our year two of our peer leadership program, we're going to continue to grow that. That really is students speaking to students about school culture, about how we treat each other, and that's what was really powerful last year. So we'll continue to go with that. And last year, as you know, we did, we really started to change our philosophy around responding to discipline and holding students accountable, but really using a restorative lens. And that has been great, and we're going to continue to, to grow with that. And we've already had a couple of instances, shall I say, and we've, that, this is just where we go now, and it's, you know, we don't think about, well, you're going to go to detention, or we're going to suspend you. We really think about what can help the student and hold them accountable. So I think like there's both pieces in balancing that. The third one is, we have, as you know, a literacy and math specialist who are really our sort of mini-leaders with our intervention block, our wind block. And they were in place last year, really doing some small pilots that are going to now grow into what is our wind block, so really growing their capacity. They are really amazing individuals, and we're really lucky to have them. They know how to work with staff, and, you know, they are great with our students. So I'm super excited. I think when you put a wind block in and you put intervention in, having the right people is like part of the first thing that has to happen, and we, we have that. So we'll continue to grow that. And then the last one is, we, as you know, we had a space audit, and we made some great changes in the building. You know, I walk around, we've got a couple of inserts in the wall where we have some hi-tops that we, you know, high school model, we are using the same hi-tops, and the kids were working, you know, on projects together. Our, the spine area is what we call our second floor, I don't know the history of that word, but it's a great area where, the other day, you know, we had students up there working on projects and students working with teachers. So it, it really, it's just great. And then we had some room changes where we grew up, we made a classroom, and we moved, shifted our music program, but it's been beautiful. So it's just, it's been great. It's just fine. Beth was walking the building and observed some of that today, but it's just been great. So we'll continue to sort of think in that way. And even small, I remember at the high school, John would make small space changes that really, over time, became, really defined the culture of the building where students can gather and work and stuff. So it's, it's been great. It's, you know, learning doesn't just always happen in a classroom in rows, right? So, so that's it. I feel like I'm just sick of hearing my own voice, but happy to answer any questions related to this. But it's some really great things happening in this building, so, yeah, I get it.
I just have one thing.
Sure.
So the wind box, it's great, and the way the curriculum works is, one day a week, it will fall off. So one like Swiss cheese thing that came up is children who have IEPs that are five days a week. The wind falls off, so there's a gap once a week for those children. So I wish, I just know if there's a workaround or...
There is. They should be, yeah. So they should be, they'll get whatever the IEP says, but even if it's not in the wind block, there is another block within their schedule that they're getting that. So they should be, and if there's not, we need to certainly address it. Sometimes it might be a word language. They may not be getting word language, or they're, you know, they'll, they'll sort of adjust it, but if they're, I think most of the IEPs are being, you know, languages has to be updated to reflect the new period, the new minutes in the period, so. But, you know, I would say reach out to the liaison or the guy, the school council in town.
Sure, yes. My thought was this, so it's going to change, the IEPs will change to match the current scheduling flex?
Correct.
Got it?
Yes. Yep, exactly. Yep.
But there may be older IEPs that can't be changed until they have...
Yeah, they'll, they'll be updated. I don't know what the sort of requirements time-wise around that is, but they, you know, before it was, I think we were fifty-six minutes, and now we're forty-nine. So they'll change the times and the minutes to, to reflect that, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Great question.
Any questions left after this call? Before we...
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sorry, devoted high school principal just, tire on the way here.
Yeah, my apologies for being late. I just spent the last forty-five minutes on Route 109. And that's why, that's why life skills, right? You learn how to change a tire. Thank you, Dad. I've now done it a few times, so my apologies. Just first, we've had a really good start to our school year. Things have started really smoothly. Kids have settled in well. Freshmen are doing really well. Today was an exciting day. We had our club and activity, not so much the fair, but we had our peer helpers, which is a, you know, a really important group at the high school, of kids who help the incoming students, incoming freshmen, as well as any new students. And they introduce them to what the various clubs and activities are. We also create video clips, too, so that families can take a look at it on their own with their child and make, you know, decisions. But, you know, the teens really look up to the older kids, and they want to know what types of clubs they're doing. And in some cases, the advisors were also co-leading some of these opportunities. But there was a lot of buzz in the high school this afternoon, which was great. We have over fifty clubs that operate, some of which are in, in our appendix, and some are which are just brand-new. And the kids do a really great job of sort of, you know, integrating them into what is happening. So that being said, our school improvement plan has four goals. You know, the, the first one, there's a number of things going on at the high school that really is very, very exciting. A lot of new courses have been developed over the last couple of years. This is the first year that we are introducing co-teaching at the, at the high school in all the major academic areas. The feedback thus far has been great. I have an outstanding special education building administrator, and she has been great with really helping support them, you know, matching teachers with a special education teacher that we know would be a really good fit. And I've been able to see that in action, and it's great, and our gen ed teachers enjoying it. So one of our goals, obviously, is to evaluate that program, the co-teaching program, and to see how we can expand it and improve upon it so that it becomes kind of part of the norm of our curriculum and our culture. Similar to Anne, we're also taking another dive into our best practices. This is the language that we use, not only at the middle and the high school, but really the whole district. And so this year, what we're asking, when our teachers are developing these new courses, they are embedding the nine best practices into the curriculum documents. You'll see in your social studies is looking at a kind of a document review where we're looking to get more modern historical events into the curriculum. So we're making that shift, and it's all based upon not just that content, but the best practices that will support that. Next goal, oh, one other thing with the first goal at the high school, and it's important everywhere, but certainly at the high school because we're preparing them for the, for the next levels of their life, is artificial intelligence, AI. And so, you know, working with our departments who are in different places, they, I think they fully understand that this is going to become part of the norm of society, and it really already has been. We're working with departments around additional trainings, additional coursework, and then the most important thing is teaching students proper ways to use AI, you know, downfalls of AI, what could be positive for, and then what could be potentially a problem. We also are looking at our D cap, which is the district curriculum plan around curriculum, around instructional practices and accommodations. And for the high school, really, you know, you want it to fit what your building is. So at the high school level, we're looking at the plans and how, what is written, how will that be implemented in a high school setting? You know, so some of them are pretty straightforward, you know, preferential seating, retests, but there are other things that take a little bit more of, of research on our part to see how is that going to play out in a high school setting, when some of the, the assessments that our students take are beyond our walls, APs, SATs, so on. So we're working with our kids around that. We do have an exciting interdisciplinary course that is coming up. It's going to start next fall, and it's taught by an English teacher and an art teacher. It's going to be a junior-senior elective at the CP and honors level, and they've been working really hard at that. So one of our plans is, you know, ensuring that our kids have wide options for their curriculum, but then also making sure that, that curriculum and instruction is of student interest. So we've been gathering feedback from the students, you know, what would be some topics you'd want to talk about? Last year, as you recall, we took a lot of visits to probably six or seven different schools all over New England, and then did some Zoom conversations with schools down in Virginia. with schools, uh, down in Virginia. So we're certainly going to be looking at that as one of our goals. Um, the new business and computer science courses are underway. So we'll be evaluating how those are going. Um, they are, um, fully enrolled, which is great. The business and public speaking course is in high demand, uh, which is terrific. And, uh, as I had mentioned earlier, with social studies, looking to change their curriculum around a little bit, um, kind of focus on a more modern perspective. Um, and then finally the last piece is kind of this relationship, social engagement piece. And it has come in some cases from our challenge success data. Sometimes it has come from our parents. It has come from PTO feedback. And post COVID, we really have sought out ways in which we can engage our kids both in the classroom, but then also outside, giving them experiences, whether that's activities after games, whether that's clubs that do special evenings. Um, we've done a, a number of trivia nights. We've done some, uh, other programming and then finding ways in which we can get our kids to come together, um, in a safe and healthy way. For some of you, you know that we have our SPAN DS program, substance prevention awareness network that has, um, come back and come back really strong and has had some really positive, uh, outcomes over the last couple of years. So we are continuing to look at ways in which we can engage our kids after school hours because they want to be together. They want to socialize, but doing it in ways that are, are healthy. Um, we have met with our PTO, uh, our two PTO co-presidents are outstanding and have already looked at a number of things this fall. We already had our first all sports, uh, fall. Um, we called it a barbecue and ended up sort of becoming a pizza party, uh, for just a couple of, uh, unforeseen reasons, but, um, brought together all of our athletes, freshmen through senior year. We had them go through a series of different activities, which was great. Um, just as a way to sort of introduce them to the high school and to one another, but then also to provide those upperclassmen with leadership opportunities. Along those lines, we've also instituted a new leadership council, which is available to anyone who's named a captain and anyone who has interest in leadership capacities. So it's not just for captains. And that was run by Cam, who was our interim athletic director and Erin Gendez, who was our women's soccer coach. Um, they had one of their sessions already. I attended it. It was great. Kids were there from 4:30 to 6:30 at night. And, uh, we're going to have three more of those as we go through. So that fourth goal is really around connecting our kids outside the classroom, in these activities, outside of school, and finding ways in which they can, um, you know, make healthy choices and see that, um, you know, drugs and alcohol don't need to be part of the culture. And that's really what we're working towards reducing and, you know, hopefully even eliminating someday. So I'd be happy to answer any specifics about anything.
You might've just said this and I missed it, John. The, um, the captain and leadership program you were just talking about.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other students who came from 4:30 to 6:30, was that, were they all teams? Was that mandatory? Was it kind of like what, um, um, Officer Mitchell?
Oh, okay. No.
No.
It was different. So just so that folks are up to speed on that, we also have our school resource officers from Sherburne and Dover meet each season with each of our teams, all of our teams, and just talk about healthy decisions, um, you know, um, safe relationships, communication protocols. If you do find yourself in a difficult situation, what do you do? Um, you know, obviously to keep our kids safe. This was a leadership council because one of the things we had talked about over the years is we have some fantastic kids and some of those kids end up becoming captains, but then when they become a captain, it's a little bit like, okay, now what do I do? You know, I, I'm a leader on the field, but what else should I be doing? So we're also teaching them some skills off the field. How do you work through some conflict that might be happening on the team? How do you work through adversity if you're a team that's had a couple of losses and kids are feeling a little bit down? How do you handle success in a way that you keep everyone invested and, and level headed about it? So the leadership council was mandatory for captains, but then also anyone else who had signed up. And we also made recommendations from faculty and from coaches and any kids who wanted to do that. So there were about 50 kids that came to that session, which was great. And keep in mind, that's not even necessarily all the sports. That's just the next season. It was just for this fall.
So, and would that also include then drama leaders, music leaders?
Yes.
To the team, that all the.
Yeah.
Great. That's great.
Yep.
I just want to like, uh, sorry for interrupting.
No problem.
Uh, I wanted to get back to AI, the, the large language models, you know, there, there's a lot of, uh, think tanks coming out of San Francisco and New York, and it's not that you're going to lose your job to AI. You're going to lose your job to the guy who knows how to use AI.
Hmm.
So that's the new prevalent thinking. So.
Sure.
It's encouraging that you guys are in step with that train of thought. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Young adults can go out with the skills necessary.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, to be honest, the groups that are struggling in some cases might be your writing teachers, right? English teachers, um, some social studies teachers. I think some of our other departments, you know, this is just a, a real natural, wow, you know, this is just great, you know? And, and as a district, we've invested in magic schools. So a lot of our folks are using it. I have used AI several times. So I, I agree. I think where the English teachers are just wanting to make sure that the idea of some original thought or brainstorming or creativity is still in the mix of their education. And I think if done right, it will be absolutely. But so I agree. I think our attitude is this is a fantastic tool that we have to just figure out. And we're, we're figuring it out, you know, minute by minute. Um, but it does provide a lot of advantages. Obviously I think it saves time, but then also can really help in that process. We just want to make sure that kids are also, um, doing that work of creating some of their own ideas.
Sure. Yes.
So with the introduction to the new courses, like the new computer course or the, um, business and public speaking and the interdisciplinary course, um, do we have the guidance that is also growing along with this to guide our students who are going with these new strengths into the colleges? I mean, is our guidance equipped to, um, guide them so they know, okay, so this is, this, these are our students. These, these students are very well proficient, um, in computer science. So these are the colleges that you should be applying to. Or so you're good in public speaking and business. So because historically we would not have had that kind of, we not have needed that guidance.
Well, but our kids have historically gone into those programs. So we've had quite a few kids who've gone into business, quite a few kids who've gone into engineering, quite a few kids who have gone into, uh, computer science. So in some ways, you know, it probably took us a little bit too long to introduce some of these courses. That being said, our guidance department has always been on the cusp of being able to figure out, you know, where these places are. Our community is really supportive. So a lot of our counselors have been able to go to schools, not all, and not only in this country, but internationally to see programs. You know, the, the big trend now too is people with Canadian citizenship are also looking at schools in Canada because financially it's an amazing deal. But some of those also have some of the best business and engineering programs in the world. So, um, yes, we are absolutely equipped. Uh, I have 110% faith in, in my guidance department being able to do those things. And when you look at technology, the ability they now have to learn about those schools. When I applied to those schools, you received a hardbook program of it. And unless you visited, that was it, right? So now you can go onto their websites, which are amazing. They're interactive. You could do virtual tours. Nothing beats going onto the campus and seeing it. And when we send our councils, that's what they do. They go and talk to admissions. They go and talk to students. They go and talk to deans and they talk about the profile of our kids. And actually, and, and it's good that they do this. They also bring along some of the stuff that our kids have and say, hey, I've got this kid. Talk to me a little bit about what you think, you know, would be their best bet for this particular program. Um, I'm proud. Last year we had six kids accepted into MIT and MIT was just named the top university, you know, in the country. Now, that's also based on what, right? There's lots of different things. But that being said, um, those kids are certainly ready and our programming and then the guidance counselors who are preparing for them for that are, are well versed.
I think I have two quick comments. I don't think anyone else has anything, but, um, one, you had mentioned the video clips from the clubs and activity fair.
Yep.
And I've got a sophomore who I think freshman year at this time was chilling out on the couch. So is that available to like all families?
Yeah, we're going to make it, we're going to make it available to all families. We will promote it through parent square of how it is available. Um, tomorrow evening we have our open house. And so that will be one of the things that we will be talking about will be those opportunities Thursday, excuse me, tomorrow's Wednesday. Thursday night we'll have open house and we will discuss, um, how we're going to get that out to people. And just so that high school parents know, we will still send out either a video or a parent square, um, post, but we really want to encourage parents and guardians and caregivers to come to the open house. We're really trying to, similar to, you know, once COVID was kind of in the rearview mirror to a degree. We know it's still there, but, um, we really encourage our kids to get back together and all of our activities. And one of the things we really want to bring back is the strength of our open house night.
Great.
So that it's well versed. And yes, those videos will be available for all grades.
Awesome. Thank you. Parent square has been great. And I like the idea of getting people really together in real life too.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is you had mentioned the co-teaching, special ed, general ed, and the look at the D cap. And I feel like those are, can pair well together. Is there structured time like where we know now that, you know, we're co-teaching, we have this opportunity, or is it kind of up to the teaching pairs to decide?
So for the co-teachers, we design common planning time for them for that reason. Um, it would be a dream if I could have common planning time for the high school staff. Our current schedule just does not allow for it. And honestly, our current schedule is student friendly. We base our, our schedule on student selections and student interest. We don't just say, oh, we're going to have four sections of US history and we need to make it fit. Students sign up and then depending upon what they sign up for, we then create the schedule that way. I think that's the right way to go because it's student centered and it's based on student interest. Um, sometimes that is a little tricky in a, in a smaller school. Um, but the co-teachers do have common planning time and the interdisciplinary people, we've also established some common planning time as well so that they can work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we vote?
I was going to talk about the subcommittee.
Subcommittee positions?
So I was going to propose we go back to that after maybe you look at the entire consent agenda.
Okay.
So you have a field trip.
Okay. So continuing on. Okay. Next then, consent items, V and state high school field trip.
So whenever, um, our students either leave the state for a field trip or stay overnight, whether it's Massachusetts or otherwise, um, the school committee has to approve the field trip. So, um, short and sweet, our model UN program has been very successful year, for years and years and years. Mr. Kaplan has been leading this trip. You've seen pictures, you know, through our meetings, through the annual report. Um, incredible opportunity for our kids. So we hope you'd consider approving it again this year.
Yes. Sure. Thank you. Should move to the next one? I know where.
I just have a quick question and I'm, I know the answer, but just if somebody wants to participate, but the 550 is supportive, their.
Their support.
Absolutely. Their support. We have, we have money that I have through student initiatives. And, um, over the years, Keith has also set it up so that there's a little bit of extra and he always accompanies that so that that extra can cover anybody that needs any financial assistance.
Yep. Thanks, Kate. Okay. Thank you.
And then the minutes.
Yes. Approval of the regional school committee minutes from June 11th, 2024. So.
Any edits or changes tonight?
I didn't see any. No.
You can prove it as a package if you're so long.
Yes. Okay. So, um, go any formal language around this?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Just may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
All right, Colleen Burt and.
Discussion.
Or second for, uh, may I have a second? Have a crack. Kevin. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Great.
Who do you oppose?
Thanks.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thanks.
If I could just jump in for some informational items, um, earlier on in the packet, you noticed that, um, Mr. Conklin included information about the new social studies pilot curriculum that they're working on in grade six and seven. We had notified you that in May and a notice went out to all sixth and seventh grade parents and caregivers about that program. It's absolutely fantastic. Um, and so hopefully you'll be hearing about that from your children. Um, and just so you know, we pilot things and we look at it, um, you know, from the student lens, from the educator lens, from the administrative lens, research, and should everything go well, we'll be coming back to you, um, next year for full approval of the curriculum. If that's the direction we go.
Thank you.
Great.
And then your subcommittee list is in there too.
Yes. So, um, I sent an email out probably in June and then we had a break. Um, and then a reminder, we have a lot of these subcommittee positions signed up, but not all. And I just wanted to reiterate what I said in the email. I think that these subcommittee involvements can vary, but it's all important work because, um, just having a healthy partnership with the staff, with the students, with the administrators is always a good thing. Um, I think it also allows us to have a solid pulse on the complexity and some details within the district. So I will encourage people, I don't want to put people on the spot tonight and take time, but to basically fill in what you can or ask questions if you have them. Ms. McCoy was helpful in getting contact people as well who might be able to speak with, to the frequency of meetings or whether your attendance is helpful or, you know, sometimes they may meet monthly, but only need you to show up, uh, the February meeting. Um, and if you were intrigued by something that maybe I signed up for, we can do some trading, um, things like that. Yes.
Can I do a pitch for my policy?
Please do.
So this is important. We, we've signed up with, um, MASC and they're helping us review all of our policies because they have to be reviewed every so often. And we're at that inflection point where it has to be done. And so we made a lot of headway last year, um, but Judy Miller stepped off of the school committee. So, and she was my other person. So I need one more person because we have two from, we have one from the Dover committee, one from the Sherburne committee. We need two from this committee because we have four.
Does it have to be a Dover and a Sherburne?
I don't think so. No. I just need two. I, we just need one. So I'm on it. And then we have, um, this wonderful woman from MASC. And usually we do Zooms on like every other Friday and we get what we need done. We meet. She goes through the language. I, we tell her changes we need and she makes sure it's, it's in line with their policy and nationally that we're not infringing anything federally. And then we bring it to this committees because it has to be approved. So it's a long process, but it's not that much work. It's like an hour, hour and a half on Fridays, every other Friday. So if anyone would volunteer for that, it would be greatly appreciated because we had momentum going and then this summer it just stopped because we really couldn't do it with just three people.
And we desperately need that work done.
Yeah. So anyway, because we, this is our last year with MASC's assistance. So.
Do you know what time on Fridays?
Usually we meet about 9:30 in the morning and we're done.
No, no, but no. Actually I teach until 10:00 in the morning. So 9:30 gives me a nice excuse to.
I can move it for you, Mark. Just for you.
I would, if you can't find anyone, I could do it if it's 9:30 in the morning. If we get shifted to like 10:15 or something, but yeah.
And it's not that, and she's very, I send her things in advance and she sends me things in advance so that we know exactly what we're going to cover. Um, and then I send it out to everybody to say, read it. And that way we have it all prepared. And if you have questions, sometimes those meetings can be done in like 30 minutes. I mean, it's going to be, it's very quick. And then if it's something convoluted, it takes a little longer. But one time we went through, I don't know, like five sections just like that because we'd done it all beforehand and had all our questions and just zip right on through.
Okay.
So that's all we got to do.
And can I just, uh, I need to sort of create, I mentioned this in the spring, a new task force for the field and track. Um, so I'm hoping for one Dover and one Sherburne school committee, you know, rep, to be honest, because it's going to be a lot of selling to the towns. We're going to get, um, Mr. Smith is on it. Our athletic department is on it. Um, and our, um, we're going to get boosters so that there's a committee making some decisions and, um, some of the decisions, um, that we have coming up. And as you know, it's on our capital plan. And it's something that probably, uh, to keep it on time, we need to sort of go out to bid in, in December.
Wow.
So, um, we're waiting for the fall to get it going and move pretty quickly.
Is this something you prefer to have in addition to the buildings and facilities or?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, yeah. I think it's a task force. It's not a.
So it's not on here currently?
Yeah. It's not. Right.
Okay.
It's sort of a separate from the building and facilities.
Okay.
Can I also ask, um, I was the rep for the guidance advisory last year and I did notice that it's not on here. I don't know if that's a change.
No, that's, that's an overlook. We will add that back.
And I'll echo Mark. I'm happy to, you know, if my name is on something and someone's really curious, I'm happy to chat.
Thank you for catching that. That's an important one.
I'll help you with policy.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Colleen.
You know, write up this stuff and that'd be great. Thank you. And it won't make it very, very.
Thank you. It's in your packets.
Okay. So, all right.
So I'm happy to stay on that if you want.
Thank you. On the guidance advisory, right?
I'll do have to share.
Thanks so much. Um, we, among us, there is a Google Doc. So you could update with your names if you think it over. And if you have any questions, we're happy to try to help find answers if you help with your decisions. So thanks. All right. So the last item is the approving the minutes.
We did that. So you can just read other people's minutes now.
Okay.
Just to read.
Just to read over and.
And do that.
Okay.
And then your next meeting is October 8th.
Yes.
And we'll look at your enrollment at that point and, um, some of our testing results. And then anything else that you think is important in the marker. Angie, no?
Great. Thank you.
Did we see the results of the challenge success survey?
We'll, we'll talk about that at our next meeting. Okay. Perfect. Good question. Segue. Couple of you have laid breadcrumbs for our next meeting. So thank you.
Okay.
Ready? So we can adjourn. Do I, I'll get better at this by the way, but do I, do we need language to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Kate Patterson.
All right. Kate Patterson moved. Any second?
Second.
All right. Angie's second. All in favor? All right. Have a adjourn.
Eight, 6:43. Well done.
Perfect. That's 6:43. Thanks.
All right. Thank you both for coming.